Everyone, I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. This is our June work session. And with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Anaya to read the open public meeting's act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting posted on our website and on social media on Friday, June 19th.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka. I'll come back to him. Mr. Ellis. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. We'll give her a minute. Mr. Price. Mrs. Sullivan.
Here.
Mrs. Summer.
Here.
Mrs. Salagi.
Here.
Mrs. Byrd.
Here.
And Mr. Castellano.
Here.
And I will go back as Mrs. Delabarka on. To Mrs. Gilbert Floyd has joined us. Yep, and when Mr. Delabarka gets here, we'll announce it. Thank you.
All right, so at this point, when the flag appears on your screen, can we all say the pledge of allegiance together? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Has everyone joined the meeting from the board?
We are waiting on Mr. Delabarka, but I will check on him now.
Okay, we'll get started in just a minute.
And I have to check on Mr. Price. I just realized he never came back.
All right, do we have everyone?
Not quite, Mr. Castellano, but we do have a form if you want to continue the meeting, and we can just mark them when they get in here.
All right, let's go ahead and get started. So, good evening, everyone, and, you know, thanks for joining us again for our June work meeting. I'm gonna just begin with a couple of quick thank yous, as I always do, to start off. I'm gonna thank Dr. Gruccio for her leadership. I'm gonna thank Ms. Anaya for her leadership. I'm gonna thank all of our faculty and staff. Every one of you, each and every one of our faculty and staff. Through this year, our students continued to learn. We provided meals to students who needed them, and we provided help and support to anyone who wanted it. I also want to take a minute to thank everyone who's been involved in now our two-phase graduation. We had our virtual graduation, which was just a fantastic job. I know many people were involved, but I know Ms. Connor and Mrs. Mullin did an outstanding job with that. I want to acknowledge and thank our project graduation team of volunteers who helped coordinate our Senior Smiles program. I know I had a very enjoyable visit with some of our students, and many of our staff and faculty did as well, and that was a wonderful thing that we were able to do. And we're looking forward now to Phase Two of our graduation, though there are still some things, details that we're working out. You know, we are going to have the live graduation on July 8th. So, you know, thank you again to everyone who's been involved, our volunteers, our faculty, our staff. I can't thank you enough, and, you know, am just so grateful for your efforts, and, you know, I just have so much spirit and good feeling for this class of 22, and, you know, wish them the best, and we'll be doing that over the course of the next month. So, at this point, that's really all that I have, and we'll move right into Dr. Gruccio and our school performance reports, I believe.
Okay, yes, we will. Thank you, Mr. Castellano, and hello, everyone, and welcome to our June meeting. Yes, we are still virtual, but we're working on that as things change every day. Just so everyone realizes, the executive order is for schools to be closed, school buildings to be closed till June 30th. So, good evening. I just want to give a quick update this week during our work session, and, as you know, I'll be sharing my superintendent's report next week at the business meeting. But echo, Mr. Castellano, our virtual teaching and learning commenced on June 18th, and it's deemed an overall success. Received a lot of positive feedback through discussions with administration, parents, and students. But a survey is forthcoming. It could be out as early as tomorrow morning. We've been working on the questions the last couple of days, getting them into the Google form. It'll be sent out to parents. And we will use this form to improve our process of virtual teaching and learning if we ever need it again. Very, very proud of our teachers and staff during this time. I'm grateful for their dedication to the plan that we put forth and their understanding of some of the hiccups along the way, but together, we made it happen, and we made it happen well. Congratulations to the class of 2020 and to our eighth graders promoted to high school status, as well as our third and fifth graders moving on to their new schools. These are truly happy moments for parents and students. Regarding graduation, while waiting a possible change in the governor's mind, if you will, about graduation regulations, it's agonizing to learn that his changes pertain to opening casinos and indoor dining, and that's a great thing, and I'm happy for those businesses, and I'm happy for all of us that'll be able to frequent those areas, but I still sit here frustrated over the graduation numbers that are allotted for our class of 2020 statewide and our very large class at our high school. And it's difficult. I mean, 500, that's a nice number, but that doesn't totally help us. So, I admit, we've been holding out on plans, hoping that there would be some positive changes in our favor. I was hoping for this grand release, and that we would have the traditional commencement exercises, but right now, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be that, and we're at this point where we have to make a decision. So, the high school administration has released instruction for seniors. They will report to the high school on Thursday to pick up their yearbooks. They're finally in. And thank you, Board of Education, and our Parents Club, and the other entities who raised money to make that happen for the seniors to get free yearbooks this year, and that's an awesome, awesome, generous move on your part. As we all know, these students, you know, haven't had the normal year. As far as yearbooks, I know some people were wondering why they take so long to come in. Well, Justin's company was short on staff. Their warehouse was down, oh, almost 75%. So, they did the best they can. So, they're in. We got them on Thursday. Diplomas will be issued as well, and students will be making a choice. So, one, participate in the live field ceremony in the morning at 9:00 a.m., just with just students, or, two, a chance to participate in a parade on the track with their parents sometime in the afternoon. So, more specific details will follow once we have names and the numbers registered. But I commend the high school administration as well for being patient, flexible, innovative, and for listening to the student voice. There were at least two surveys that were out there, and we support your effort. So, we're getting closer to a more refined plan, and we'll be ready for July 8th. Athletics, another hot topic. The governor said that we, schools, high schools can start athletic practices this summer, summer practices honorable after July 13th. And that was announced before guidance was released, so the NJISA went to work quickly, and we just received some guidance. It's a little vague. I spent the day talking to our, actually, the last two days, to our athletic director. Today, he did collaborate with Cape Atlantic League A.D.s, our nurses, trainers, the high school principal, our attorney, H.R. Director, and myself for development of a plan. We spent a lot of time, and hopefully, we'll have something for our school community soon. I know tomorrow NJSIA is supposed to release some clarifications to their guidance. Mr. Pellegrino met with the A.D.s today, and I just want the public and the board to understand that keep in mind that this plan does include health screenings of athletes every day, which coaches cannot do, so we have to look at some staff members that would be able to do that. A limited numbers of athletes in a practice group. There's a time limit on practices. There's no sharing of equipment. Outside workouts only. Students cannot go into the buildings. They cannot go into locker rooms. The students must be using masks and social distancing, etc. So, we have a lot of planning to do for over the 500 student athletes and coaches that come to our fields, particularly in the summer months, preparing for the fall season. This also would apply to our band, our marching band, for conditioning purposes only. So, at this time, there's no information on fall sports, whether they will take place or not. I just want to make that clear. All this is, all these guidelines right now from NJSIA is for summer workouts only. And just last thing I want to say, always check out our district newsletter and our district website for end-of-year celebrations and information for this summer. Okay, that's my report, Mr. Castellano, and I would like to now introduce Mr. Santilli. So, he will share the student performance report this year. And Steve, I want to thank you for the work that you've done with this, and that we spent some time this afternoon reviewing all the information that you are sharing with the board as we do this annually. So, go ahead. Take it away.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Gruccio. I'm gonna be presenting my screen, so I'll be sharing two different presentations with the board. So, the very first presentation is on the school performance reports. So, this is data that is from the 2018-19 school year. Much of this information and what I am going to reference throughout is a lot of the test scores, standardized test scores in both language arts and mathematics. On October 29th, if you recall, there was a presentation done by the supervisors of math and language arts, as well as Mr. Davis, and it highlighted the outcomes of the 18-19 spring data, basically, for both language arts and mathematics. So, a lot of this is a compilation of that, along with lots of other data. One of the things that you see here is that this is a federal report, and it is required under ESSA. And the report is, and when you see it, it will also be a summary of, it's kind of a one-page summary, and that's what we're gonna be focusing on tonight as we go through. There is, as we go through, an access. You can go to the NJGov backslash education site, and you can pull up school performance reports, not just for Egg Harbor Township School District, but of course, any district in the state. This is what you would find if, in fact, you were to access that report, and ultimately, you can go back into previous school years. However, there is a lot of comparative data with each year's new report. Ultimately, what we have here is information that we're gonna share, and this is what that snapshot looks like. Many of you probably recall seeing this in the past. It's kind of what I refer to as the speedometer of where you fall in regards to your progress. That one-page snapshot is really where we're focusing our presentation on tonight. However, as you can see here, there are, and this list here is just a quick snapshot, but as you can see, it contains hundreds of data points about the Egg Harbor Township School Districts, and this really is just some of the information that you'll see within these reports as you come through them. Obviously, for the sake of time, we don't delve into each and every one of those particular areas, because it would be an extensive presentation, but the information is there nonetheless, should you desire to see it. Of course, as an administrative team, we compile that information, and we go through it to make decisions with curriculum instruction as the year goes on. Some new data this year, I thought it was important to point out. Some other newly added features here are data that they're compiling in regards to computer science and information technology, of course. Their focus on student growth, which I'll talk about in a minute, in regards to mean SGP, having comparative data there for student growth, chronic absenteeism, graduation rates, and of course, tech education courses. And they're also starting to compile three-year progress data for some of those areas as well. So, that is new. Some of the information that you see here is information, as I mentioned, that we also shared in the fall, because the focus here is on English Language Arts and also mathematics. I put a small asterisk next to the 1617 to 1718 year, because I think it's important for us to highlight the fact that, I guess, the easiest way to look at this is the fact that we're not really comparing apples to apples when we take a look at 1718 to 1819, and mainly because in 1617 to 1718, we're still taking the PARC test, and we transitioned in 1819 to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which is based off of, of course, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So, you can see the data here that is comparative data from year to year, three-year trend, in regards to how we fell during EHT. Student growth is really a mean SGP score. So, those teachers that fall within, for instance, a tested grade or subject highlighted there in English in those particular grades, four to eight, mathematics in grades four to seven, will receive a mean SGP score. Really what it does is, in the state, it compares a particular student to their academic peers and how they fall. Really what that does is it measures growth of that particular student. How did they perform, not just in that particular classroom, but also within that particular school? So, in turn, it's not just the teacher that gets the mean SGP score, but also it is the school. Administrators receive an SGP score as well, and that's all compiled through that median student growth percentile. When you take a look at student growth, you can take a look here at the trends. You can see the language arts on the left side. This is the same information that was in the chart. It's just in a graphic form. And ultimately, you can see the three-year trend in language arts and also in math. Again, keeping in mind, 1819 is ultimately, and again, I'll continue to reference, is a simple fact that it is a different test. It's a New Jersey Student Learning Standards Assessment test compared to PARC for the previous two years. However, we didn't meet the standards across the board, not just in 1819, but also in the previous two years. When you take a look at the statewide assessment in regards to proficiency, we didn't meet the targets across the board, except in math. So, right now, in math, we fell short. However, I think also, when you take a look, just again, at a cursory level here, just a quick glance at the data, we may have fell below, but also, if you take a look at the annual target at 44.7%, even the statewide proficiency fell below even what the annual target was. But again, this is the status here for us to continue to dig into and learn and grow from to be able to enhance our curriculum instruction moving forward. I'm gonna move through these particular slides fairly quickly. Again, this is information, as I mentioned before, that we presented in the fall, and these are the one-page snapshots. So, when you take a look at this and you want to digest those performance reports in a little bit more detail, this is the first page that you would get. This is that, now, again, that 30,000-foot view, let's say, of Egg Harbor Township School District, and then it's broken down by each of the schools. You can then dig into each of those performance reports a little bit deeper to get all those other data points that they talked about, for example, and again, if you so choose, you can dig even deeper. But this is the district lens, and then it goes down from there, so we have SWIFT next in regards to language arts and math, as well as chronic absenteeism is another factor that they measure. Slavol. Davenport Elementary School. Miller School. Alder School. Fernwood Avenue. And finally, a high school. Now, part of the high school, and typically on the initial snapshot of the high school, of course, there's also the graduation rate, obviously, which would be on the high school one-page summary. I didn't include it here. It was included on the previous slides, and of course, they're accessible through the state site, but I didn't include it, because the image, of course, would get very small for your view. In terms of where we go from here, it's important to point out that, based off of your data, there are times where you could become a targeted school, and targeted school would be a school that would be in need of improvement. And for the 2021 school year, we do have a school that is going to be a targeted school, and that's the Egg Harbor Township High School. And the category that we fell short in, mainly for two consecutive years, would be students with disabilities. And unfortunately, and as I go through this, we didn't meet the targets in those particular areas across the board, and when you don't do that for two consecutive years, then there are things that you put into place. So, for instance, how was the school identified? Again, this highlights how that occurred. You can see here that that particular subgroup for students with disabilities did miss all those interim targets, and they fell below that state average, and that does have to occur for two consecutive years. And you, again, see the different groups that are here, but that's the focus moving forward at the high school. So, what happens next, these are the things listed that we would focus on next. Of course, we would have to assess our needs, identify strategies, and really, the big thing is really creating this annual school plan, because the school plan is gonna identify things, and many of the things that we already have in place in regards to how are we gonna meet the needs of the students to be able to meet those interim targets moving forward, especially in that particular subgroup. But I think it's a good exercise, not just for meeting the needs in that particular subgroup, but also across any of those particular groups moving forward. And that's where we have conversations about the RTI process, for instance, and our tiered interventions. What is working, what is not working. Those are conversations that we would have around scheduling and the like. These are just additional links and resources. This presentation was uploaded as a PDF for you in Board Docs, so you can get quick access to the webpage where the school performance reports are linked, as well as the reference guide and the summary guide, all of which we briefly highlighted here tonight. So, that concludes the school performance report presentation. I'm gonna exit out of this slideshow and go into the next slideshow. That's what happens when your cursor freezes for a minute. Hold on. All right, there we go. So, our next presentation is the NJSLA Science Results, and these are the science results for the Spring of 2019 test. So, if you take a look here, and...
You have to go back into present mode.
Yeah, let me go back into present mode. Sorry for the delay. I'm working off of two different computers, so... All right. All right, now we're good. All right, so, as I was saying, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, science results for the Spring of 2019. You can see the particular grades that are tested here, three particular grades in the past. Also noted here, this was referred to as the New Jersey ASK test for science. Now, because of the focus shifted to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for science, so did the test. Therefore, hence why they transitioned to the new assessment. So, why did we need the new test? Of course, as I mentioned, when we went to new standards, of course, they wanted to measure the effectiveness of those particular standards and the curriculum that is being delivered to our students. Therefore, there was a standardized assessment that was created, hence the implementation. You can also see here the timeline in regards to the rollout. When the state adopted those particular standards for science, and then also the full implementation versus the rollout, you know, into the schools and districts, and then followed by the new assessment. So, in regards to why it looks different, really what it comes down to when you think about this, and we went through this before with our transition from New Jersey ASK to PARC to even the NJSLA for Language Arts and Math. In these transitions, typically, what we find is that it moves from what you would refer to as really the lowest level of blooms, where you're going to have the memorization of particular topics and skills, to where you are going to need to apply that knowledge, for instance, as higher-level, higher-order thinking. So, because of that, that is a lot of what we've seen, even with the transition with this test. You know, and it's also evident, to be honest, with the data as well, compared to what we've seen with New Jersey ASK. So, we're gonna dive right in, and basically, you can see here that they break the data down with four levels. If you recall from what was presented from NJSLA testing for Language Arts and Math in the fall, for Language Arts and Math, they have five levels. This is slightly different. Science has chosen to have a four-level system. And you can see here that, and what I'm gonna focus on next, is when you are in a Level Three or Four, you would be meeting that proficiency range. So, these are our initial scores. Again, keep in mind, new test, definitely more rigorous, and ultimately, this is what I would refer to as our baseline data. When you move through the breakdown of not just grade level and moving away from comparing the district to the state, but when you break down grade level and then also take a look at the different levels, again, as I mentioned, the percent of students at Level Three and Four is that combined columns. So, I put that at the end, just to show our overall proficiency ratings there. Same information, however, just in a chart form, for those of you that are more visual. I thought that this would be helpful. Again, broken down by Grade Five, Grade Eight, and Grade Eleven. We only have, of course, one school for Grade Five and, of course, Grade Eleven. That's why you're seeing in Grade Eight the two different colors to the left. But ultimately, that is comparing, as it was in the chart, our performance compared to the state. The district performance is also in there, but again, when you only have one school, like in Grade Five, it's gonna be the same exact bar graph. Moving forward, this is our performance by ethnicity. So, again, it's broken down by Grades Five, Eight, and Eleven. There's three areas. And you can see that this is a combination of if you scored, and you fell within this particular ethnicity group, if you scored a three or a four, so it's greater than or equal to three, so that would be our categories for Three and Four. This would be how we scored. Again, a different way to represent the data, but it's broken down based off of ethnicity. Finally, what we have here is, again, demographic data. This is a compilation of Level Three and Four data, broken down the same way. However, this is more of a focus of, rather than ethnicity, demographic data, whether gender, whether students are special education students, five or four students, ELL, and the like. So, again, important data for us to look at in regards to how our students are performing and how we can best meet their needs moving forward as it pertains to science. What resources are available? You know, obviously, there are some, there's some information linked here in regards to information. You can get everything from practice tests to, in regards to the NJSLA science test. But also, I think it's important to point out, and typically, what we would point out... But also, I think it's important to point out, and typically what we would point out in the fall, is the work that we do in district as well. I didn't want to reiterate all of the information again and have additional slides here for the sake of time and because we're virtual, but the simple fact that, you know, the work that we're doing with, for instance, in Language Arts and Math, for instance, we had the addition this year even of two part-time remedial teachers to really push into the middle schools for the first time to be able to meet the needs of students. You know, that's really some of that work of the RTI process as well. This data, being that this is baseline data, is going to be data that we're going to dive into. And I know that we'll work very closely with our science supervisor to start to really just extrapolate this data, take a look at where our strengths and weaknesses are, compare ourselves even since the baseline to other surrounding school districts, and then make informed decisions moving forward in regards to how we can best meet the needs of the students, but also continue to grow as we continue to take an assessment like this moving forward. So with that, Mr. President, that concludes my two presentations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santilli.
If I just may interrupt you, you can thank Mr. Santilli. I'm sorry. I'd just been informed, and I apologize to you and to the public, unbeknownst to me, and this is how things change regularly in our world. The yearbook distribution and diploma distribution and student in-person survey is going to occur tomorrow at the high school, not Thursday. So I just got word on that, and I just wanted to make that clear before we got any further. And I give the mic back to you as you are commending Mr. Santilli. Thank you.
Okay, so some exciting things tomorrow for our students. Very good. Glad to hear that. And just a thank you to Mr. Santilli. Very comprehensive report for us. And certainly areas that are good to see and areas where work needs to be done. Simple as that. So I think at this point, we're ready to move along and do some recognitions.
Mr. President, I just have a quick question. I don't know if I could ask it now. It's in regards to the preschool. Should I hold that? And I have something about full-day kindergarten. I just wanted to find out what the counts were. Is now the time, or should I wait till later?
I guess we can do that when we do board member questions after public comment. Is that all right? Is everyone okay with that, or?
All right. Thank you. We'll come back to it.
Okay.
Okay, okay, I'm following the agenda here, and Chandra's going to help me here. Kevin, whoever's back there running behind the scenes tonight. Just wanted to share with the public, these are the plaques that we would be issuing to our board reps, our student board reps at this meeting. And sadly, they were not able to join us tonight, and we did recognize them at the previous meeting. Mr. Castellano and I shared our sentiments, and we congratulated them and told them we appreciate their service. And these two young seniors here, Grace Baumgartel and Nicholas Seppi, as you all know, were with us for a short time. They didn't get to experience the last three months of boardmanship, but we appreciate them, and they did a great job. And we're going to recognize them with these plaques on graduation day. Mr. Castellano presents these plaques to them in person. So we wanted to share with the public what it looks like, what they look like. And typically, then, sitting beside them would be our new board reps. So as we're being virtual here, we're going to share with you juniors who just became seniors, and now will be the new student representatives for the 2021 school year, and that's Ethan Saul and Gabriela Garcia. And word has it, they're going to join us next week at our June 30th meeting. So you'll get to meet them and welcome them as we do in person. So congratulations to them. There is a process that takes place through the History Department, and they are your new board reps. So can't wait to meet them. Thank you. Mr. Castellano, that concludes our report.
Very good, and we look forward to meeting our new student reps virtually and in person, getting a chance to present our plaques to our outgoing reps on July 8th. So with that, we're going to go into Finance and Operations, and I'm going to ask for our Finance and Operations Report.
Good evening, everyone. We had our Finance and Operations Meeting on Tuesday, June 9th at 7:00. In attendance were myself, Mr. Ellis, Mr. Price, Mrs. Salagi, Ms. Anaya, and Dr. Goccio. Most of the things that took place at that meeting were end-of-the-year items. You will see them on the agenda. We started out with 6421 Highlights, which involved football reconditioning equipment, which we do every year. We had some slayball remediation. We had accident insurance that we needed, we need to pay. We had a lot of gifts and grants. One was for grief counseling. One was for the Alter Yearbook. Another one was from South Jersey Gas. Again, you can click on that link and see all of the grants. And then we began with awarding bids. We were to bid for our auditor, the banking that we're going to do, and also, we're going to have a lot of concrete work done in the different parts of the district. We addressed the annual renewals. We also addressed the resolution of capital reserve deposit. A new resolution for us is for the Health Insurance Reserve. We are self-insured now, so we'll be establishing this fund this year. And then there's a resolution for the Emergency Reserve. All of those do have not-to-exceeds, so it will be a certain amount of money in those. We, under transportation, we will be looking at vendor contracts. With the Personnel Committee, the Policy Recommendation 4411 was recommended. School reopening plans, partnership with C Canvas, and our overall transportation report. Food service, we went through what food service would be doing through June 18th. We're very pleased that the NJDOE and the NJUSDA has selected Mr. Beck, our Director of Food Service, to represent the state in, on these committees. So that shows the respect that the state has for our employees here. It's a real honor that they chose Mr. Beck. Our facility update, we're going to be doing interviews, or they may have taken place by now. This meeting was a while ago, for the interim supervisor. Vestibule update, they're way ahead of schedule, and they're on price, which is wonderful. That's one good thing that came out of COVID. We will be updating a lot of the signage around the district, making it look fresh and clean, and also giving clear direction where offices are, where schools are, traffic patterns, et cetera. And then the business office. The Special Ed Bookkeeper is now going to be reporting out of the business office, which brings all of the paperwork and things that need to be done. They'll all be done in the same area, which will make everybody much more efficient. And I think that's about it. Chandra, do you have any extra insights?
Yes, I just wanted to elaborate on a few points. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, for your recap. Just going over the format of this agenda and kind of following along that way. There are three action items for this meeting tonight, specifically due to deadlines for grants that have to be submitted, as well as the bills list for payment. That is going to be on this agenda as well as next agenda. It is the school's year-end, and it's very voluminous, so we do break the bills list up into two different meetings. Overall, for 6421, as Mrs. Sullivan mentioned, they are Category B items. They are renewals. They are budgeted items. At the bottom of the Gifts, Grants, Donations Resolution for the monthly report, you will see, and we will do this going forward, the very bottom of the report discusses our year-to-date attempted solicitations or applications for grants and donations, as well as the amount received to date. The resolutions for reserves, I would like to just give a little bit of time on that if I can. Traditionally, at the end of every school year, when the year is closed out over the summer into the fall during the audit process, all of the unspent money is trapped and calculated to determine how much we can offset taxes in a future year in a budget. So when we close out this year, 1920, it'll be the fall, and we could not normally put that into savings for 2021 because the budget's already done. It would have to go to 2122, and this was discussed during the budget hearing. On this agenda is a new resolution called for an Emergency Reserve. The County Office Department of Education has made recommendations for those districts who are losing money into the next school year, 2021, to put some money away from this year into a reserve. And what that does is, after this year's savings are established, we can then set aside some money from 1920, savings, if you will, that we did not spend, into an emergency reserve. That emergency reserve can then be opened up in 2021 when the proposal that's out there gets formalized and the government does change our state aid. What's out there right now is a proposal saying that they're probably going to be taking 4.1 million out of the approved budget for 2021. Once that becomes formalized, that reduction of 4.1 million has to be offset somehow, and they will let us use Emergency Reserve, which is basically savings from this year. So traditionally, you would have to wait until the following year, but they are going to allow us to use it just because of the loss of funding. I will entertain questions if it's not clear, but that is something that's new, that is being recommended. The next question is, you know, you always hear how we're going to need that in future years. We will. When this year is closed out, we will need to have some money in our reserves, almost like our savings account, in order to offset the budget for 2122. So what's going to happen is this resolution is saying, authorizing us, the board, to set aside funds, not to exceed, you know, $2 million in this instance, in an Emergency Reserve, which will help us open up next year, help us offset cuts into next year. But we will still have some money put aside for savings in 2021. I hope I didn't confuse you because I know it's new. Capital Reserve is something we do traditionally every year. What that says is when we close out this school year, you can put some money away and do some capital improvements to your buildings. And that was presented during the budget process, and that would include roof replacements, those rooftop units we talked about. You know, they're very old at the high school, those sorts of projects that are not just general routine things. They are very expensive, big-ticket items. Another thing that's new in reserves for this school year is we are now self-funded. 1920 was our first year to be self-funded with health insurance. Or May, sometimes, the doctors may not send the bills right away, so we have to pay them in July, in August, and sometimes September. Setting up a health insurance reserve allows us to not, to capture that and not think of it as unspent money. It allows us to put it into a pocket that says when those bills come later, we can then pay those bills. So the recommendation on this resolution is not to exceed up to $3 million, which is basically just over six weeks of claims, when we calculated that out. What's going to happen is that is going to be put into a reserve that is going to help pay those bills in the summer and the fall. If the bills come in at hypothetically, you know, $1 million, that money stays in that health insurance reserve to help offset any future bills and maybe, you know, future budgets to help save taxpayers in other budgets. But to set that up is a very fiscally responsible thing to do for this first year, not knowing what's going to happen. If you're just in real-world, real talk right now, elective surgeries are just starting to come back. Doctors really weren't seeing patients. You weren't able to see your chiropractor. Routine visits really got put on hold, so our savings this year looks like it's going to be a lot. Like, we didn't spend as much. But what's going to happen is next year, all those knee replacements that couldn't get done right now, all those shoulder repairs, all those things that couldn't get done are going to be hit next year. So we're going to be expecting a huge difference compared year to year. This reserve will help protect our budget. Moving right along, as Mr. Ellis says. The next chunk of items on the agenda have to do with routine things that are going to be closing out the 1920 school year, specifically some out-of-district contracts, some, a statement of assurance for lead testing. We have to do that every six years. We did do that in 2016, so we are still in compliance. Going down, go to future year, 2021. Next section is routine things that have to be done as part of our reorganization into a new school year, such as a resolution for compliance with purchasing standards, our purchasing thresholds. We did go out to bid for certain items in routine. We haven't gone out to bid for auditor or banking for a while, so we did actually do those two things. Mrs. Sullivan highlighted that. Setting the price for school lunch next year. Something that I'm going to highlight when I talk about our budget in a little bit is we are self-insured also for property claims, workers' comp, and those sorts of insurances. Every, at the close of a fifth year, that fund gives a refund of anything that was not spent. At the close of this fifth year, we're looking at $117,000 in savings. And we have elected, I put a resolution for the board to elect to take that $117,000 in savings and apply it towards my 2021 bill, which will then help offset that $4 million, getting us a little bit closer to that. Also on here is a renewal for our prescription plan, which we were already in a contract for prescription, a contract red. It was going to expire in 2021, excuse me, 2122. But I went back to the vendor and basically was able to negotiate a 2.5% savings, which reflects $135,000 in our 2122 budget, which will also help us get closer to that $4 million. So because I've said it a few times, let's talk about that $4 million. We have updated the board. When we heard the news, the governor did put out a proposal, as well as an allocation by school district of how he was going to meet his budget needs, being as though the state has less revenue coming in. We were anticipating a $6 million increase in our budget. It is now a $4 million, excuse me, a $1.9 million increase, reflecting a $4.1 million hold next year. Basic update is, I mentioned a few things that are on this agenda that are going to help us get closer. We did already approve last month the CARES Act, which is over $900,000, almost a million, that we're going to be using to offset next year's budget. We have also identified things within the district that we could think, just wait just one more year. This $6 million was truly spent on aligning curriculum, was spent on trying to get the resources for the staff and the students. But to go into next year, understanding kindergarten was so important. Kindergarten is still in the budget as of right now, and staff, you know, as far as right now, we aren't looking at any significant changes there. It may be positions we've identified, but not necessarily people, just vacancies that may be in the personnel right now. So that's a bit of an assurance to tell you, we are on the right track. We are still working very hard. We have identified hundreds of thousands, millions really, in savings to get us closer to that $4 million gap, but we're still working very diligently with them. So that is that update. Transportation is also helping us get there. Another update, we are negotiating with Greater Aggarve Regional, as well as Special Services School District, on our transportation contracts during this closure. The transportation companies statewide made a stance, a united front, to say, pay us 100%, or we won't do your runs next year. It's a little bit scary. Greater Agarve and Special Services are also, are still fighting that fight for us because we do have a jointure with them on some contracted runs that we just can't manage in-house due to the staff needs as well as the vehicles. So we are waiting for them to give us more information. As of speaking to some representation, some of the VAs today, we do have another meeting Thursday. We're looking at, hopefully, coming between, you know, under 75% of their true total costs. They did not, most of them did not bring their staff back, so it's a very hard argument to say that their cost at 100%. They definitely didn't have gas. They do have lease purchases. We do know they have some costs, but 100% is just not a fair ask. Because all of this is happening, we are looking at our own runs in-house with the recommendation for the Transportation Department and realigning them to be hours versus runs. They have identified some runs we can do in-house we normally would not have done because of the flexibility. They have identified some ones we can do in-house we normally would not have done because of the flexibility. We also have look at going to be doing a bid myself. Usually I use Greater Reg or Special Services to help us get runs together. There are some runs that are one hundred percent Ed Harbor Township students. Therefore, I can bid them directly with a vendor and try to save some five to six percent of administrative costs. So it's a lot to say, we are working very hard to make sure we are spending every dollar wisely and going along with the transportation reorganization that the board does support. And we do appreciate it, and it was definitely a good exercise. The food service department is officially done at this point. They're not, we are not doing summer feedings. However, the food bank every year, along with Cooper Levinson and some other local bigger companies get together and they had to let us eat please. It's an organization that allows students to continue to have food, food packages for families in the summer. Traditionally, that would get picked up at the school. Because our buildings are closed, they've allowed us to work on these vouchers. I have the vouchers. We're going to be distributing them for free reduced families in Ed Harbor Township and working with the food bank to make sure that they get their family boxes. They're covering for five weeks of the summer, which helps. The facilities update, Mrs. Sullivan mentioned interviews for an interim. At this point, we rejected those applicants. It was looking to fill a vacancy with a medical, from a medical leave that was caused. We got word that that medical leave will be ending July first, which is great news. On an intermittent basis, based on the need of that individual. So without getting into too much, we rejected the applicants and we are going to just have our supervisor back. So happy. Want to make sure we cover everything here. So. I also, last piece we have to cover is the questions. So basically, we send the agenda out on Fridays. The Board of Education gets to look at all of the items and then submit questions for clarification before they take action so that they are being they have the most educated, they can make an educated decision. So basically, when the clarifications that were needed or questions asked, first one had to do with insight is on this contract, is on this agenda for the new fiscal year. However, didn't have a contract yet, so the questions of the terms of the contract were being asked. Insight is another vendor we negotiated with during this closure. Insight is our, our provider for, excuse me, our provider for substitute services. And we were able to negotiate a rate better than most for the closed months, as well as look at what the rate will be next year. We did have a discussion in executive to kind of help guide that ship on what was budgeted and what we're going to be doing for next year. So we can have more information before the vote for next week. Another question had to do with the payment to insight specifically on the bills list, and that was for actual work done, actual substitutes used during the closure. A question was asked if we were being reimbursed for the meal services provided during the closure, and that is a guess. We are getting reimbursed from the state. Through the federal government sometimes because of, sometimes the federal state didn't go, the state's not covering certain meals. If you were paid, but the federal government says, feed everybody, we're going to take care of it. But there is going to be, we do anticipate a loss for the food service department during the last few months, just because there wasn't the volume of sales to offset the labor costs, because we did have to pay the staff while we were closed. Another question, we have a replacement project for Swift School. The majority of the school, all the windows had been replaced from the original build. There was one section that was not completed yet, and that is on this, within the budget to get that taken care of this year to help with energy efficiencies and, you know, replacing windows that needed to be replaced. Check signers and authorized accounts as a resolution for July to June. The bank accounts, we did add one during the year, but that was already a resolution. This is a renewal. There's nothing new on this agenda that wasn't already introduced in the past. The check, the check signatures are titles, not people. Just because if a principal changes, we don't want to have to keep resolutions all year long. NJSIAA has increased their membership fee for the first time in about seven years by three hundred fifty dollars. That's pretty much to cover, you know, just natural increases over the years. But they've just held us whole until this, this new contract. Trash rubbish removal from the township did go up fifteen hundred dollars. I was pleased, that was better than the two percent we've been experiencing every year. So that to me was a win. ACIT tuition, we do have a lot of students there. We do pay one tenth of the tuition over ten months. Cell phone reimbursements for administrators, some, some administrators have cell phones, some get reimbursed. The ones who get reimbursed can submit it monthly. Some contracts read as long as it's reimbursed within the year. That's the difference between that agreement. Class three officers from the township, we did have a contract with them. However, we were closed. The township agreed to only charge us for the days they actually worked. When we needed them, they did help with food service delivery and chromebook distribution, those sorts of projects. We are awarding, awarding, not awarding, excuse me, appointing bond counsel, and the question came up, why do we need bond counsel? We actually do have a bond counsel annually. We've just never made it official by appointing them. They, just like a broker of record for health insurance, you should have bond counsel on record. Or when, you know, when Mooney wants to come and do an analysis of our financial records, they make a statement for us on our behalf. When we do a lease purchase or any type of other financing agreement, they do all the reviewing of that information. And that concludes the finance committee report.
Thank you, Shandra, very much. A lot of good information there. I'm going to ask if any board members have questions on finance and operations. Okay, hearing, hearing none on finance and operations. I believe we have action on five point two through five point six. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so for, for this evening, I'm going to be asking for a motion on five point two through five point six. May I have a motion?
Motion, Marita.
Second, Mr. Price.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on those two items? May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis? He's working on his mute button. Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price? You are unmuted. You're okay.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And now we'll move to curriculum, and I'll ask for our curriculum committee report, please.
Okay, good evening. On June sixteenth, twenty twenty, the curriculum committee met. Present were myself, Dr. Grugio, Ms. Moss, Mr. Price, Mr. Delabarka, and Mr. Santilli. Some items that will be needing board approval are the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one textbook list has been updated. The list contains updates to existing textbooks with no new textbooks added. The twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school performance report was reported, but also will be sent out to the public. The twenty nineteen NJSLAW science score reporting schedule was presented at tonight's meeting. Much of the summer curriculum writing has taken place during virtual learning. Some curriculum writing will be needed to support full-day kindergarten. NJCAP and TeamCAP require no action at this time. The district has reapplied for this grant. And some non-agenda items that were discussed were summer work for high school students has been linked to the high school's guidance page. There are some summer readings that will be taking place. An optional seventy-five day reading challenge will be taking place for students in grades K through five. All forms are digital, and there are links to free digital resources for parents to gain access to books. And libraries will be reopening as well. For middle school students, students are free to choose any book they would like to read. There will be a one assignment for all students to complete. Digital resources have been listed for these students. And for the high school students, there are PDFs on most of the required texts, so families do not have to purchase these books. If a book is not available in PDF, students may contact the media specialist for a hard copy of the text. The summer ASPIRE program will be held virtually. The program will run from July sixth through August thirteenth, from eight AM to twelve PM. The district will be holding a virtual aviation flight test program. The program will be held on Wednesdays during the month of July from eleven AM to twelve fifteen PM. Summer professional development for staff will be held virtually. Information for PD has been derived from surveys from staff members and has been distributed to all staff. The district's COVID resources and information page has been updated. And the NJSIAA guidelines has been updated with a tentative date of July thirteenth. And the district is awaiting more guidance. A plan was put into place for the return of all Chromebooks. All families were notified of this plan. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Summer. Do we have any questions from board members on curriculum? Okay, hearing none. We're, we're going to move into personnel. We met in executive session this evening. I'm going to ask Dr. Charlton if he has any other comments or things he would like to add at this point.
Yes, quickly, Mr. President. In discussion and personnel, we talked about some confidential matters, but also we discussed the need for you to take action on item seven point two transfers and seven point three appointments tonight, and that's to facilitate summer programs. Because next week's regular session is only one day before the new month of July starts. We wanted to give those programs a little bit of breathing room. And then just two points of information for the board in recognizing some very worthy people. Unfortunately, we couldn't have our typical Teacher of the Year, Educational Service Professional of the Year recognition this year. So we wanted to reschedule that for September's meeting, and even though we don't have a crystal ball, at least kind of have a tentative date of the September twenty second meeting, and if that doesn't work out, at least do a virtual recognition like we did the student board members tonight. And right along with that, Mrs. Wazan had reached out to Dr. Ruccio and myself and let us know that the EHTEA is planning the district retirement dinner that couldn't be held this spring on September seventeenth. So we thought it would be a nice idea to kind of package those two together, but she has booked the Sevu Marriott for September seventeenth for the district retirement dinner. So two points of information for the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate that. It's, you know, kind of bittersweet. I mean, as we approach graduation, which is one of the traditionally nicest things we, you know, do and along with our Teacher of the Year recognition and Support Professional of the Year, those are those are also one of the more special times that, that we do, as well as our retirement dinner. You know, really taking the time to recognize our retirees, celebrate their careers. So, you know, bittersweet, you know, it's, it's, it's sad in a way that they won't be done in the normal way, but we will do them. So, and all wonderful things. So we will get to them. We will get them done. And, and have, and celebrate all those things. So thank you for that. And we need to take action on seven point two and seven point three. So I'm going to ask for a motion now on those two items, seven point two and seven point three.
So made. It's Barbara.
Second, Marita.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on seven point two and seven point three? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Where'd she go?
She's here. I see her, just her mute, that's all. She's working on it. I'll come back. Mr. Price? Oh, there she goes. Go ahead.
Yeah, my answer, yes, I'm working off through computers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price? You're not muted, Mr. Price. You should be okay. Oh, now you're muted. There you go.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
No.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. We're now going to move to policy, and I'll ask for our policy committee report.
Good evening. On Monday, June eighth, two thousand twenty, the members of the policy committee, we met virtually to discuss the policy agenda items. Present at the virtual meeting were Dr. Brucio, Mr. Santilli, Mr. Castellano, myself, Mrs. Byrd, and Mrs. Sullivan. And also Casey Gifford was in place of Mrs. Alwell. The following policies and discussions took place at the meeting on June eighth, two thousand twenty. We reviewed six policies and one regulation for board approval. The policies and regulations reviewed and discussed were policy number four, four, one, one. Placement on Guidance Steps for Bus Drivers. Policy and Regulation Number One Six Four Two Earn Sick Leave. Policy Number Four Two One Nine Commercial Driver, Commercial Driver's License Controlled Substance and Alcohol Use Testing. Policy Eighty Six Hundred Student Transportation. Policy Number Eight Six Three Zero Bus Drive, Bus Drive, Bus Driver Bus Aid Responsibility and Policy, I mean, Responsibility and Policy. Policy Number Nine One Four Zero Citizens Advisory Committee. Policy Four Four One Four Two One Nine Eight Six Zero Zero and Eight Six Three Zero. All are all mandated and revised policies. It only require one reading. Policy and Regulation Number Sixteen Forty Two is a new mandated policy and regulation, and this will be the first of two readings. Policy Nine One Four Zero, which is the Citizens Advisory Committee, has not been mandated and was, was a discussion item for the committee. And at this time, the actual will be taken on policy number ninety one forty. However, as a committee, we requested additional information from surrounding districts, different policies and information that was sent for review on June fourteenth. So we will be looking at different policies and looking at a possibility of we're going to be reviewing and discussing the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions from board members on policy? All right, seeing none. Thank you to Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. And we are now going to go to our public comment. We will have comments for a three-minute period. And as most of you know, from being with us before, there are certain things we can't discuss, litigation and personnel specifically. And if it turns out that we get a question that's very complicated, it may very well be necessary for one of our administrators to get back to you with a, with a detailed answer. So with that, we'll move forward with the public comment.
And just a reminder, there will be a thirty-second delay to this broadcast to the public. Do not leave a message on the phone. Just please keep calling until somebody responds. Thank you. Okay, public comment. Name and address, please.
Good evening. This is Terry Alabarda, two oh six Westwood Road at Carver Township. I have a few comments to make tonight. First of all, I want to start and say that the teachers did a great job during the school closure. I have three children at Fernwood, and my eighth grader still made National Junior Honor Society with straight A's, and I was very excited to hear about the possibility of summer workouts because she is entering high school. And you have a phenomenal soccer team coming from Fernwood. They did have an undefeated season. I also wanted to mention that, not sure how much I can attach it does with the Amistad curriculum that the law was passed in two thousand and two. But the goal of the commission is to promote the wider implementation of educational awareness programs regarding the African slave slavery in America and the many contributions of Africans have made to American society. The Amistad Commission is holding a virtual training from August third to fourteenth for educators and administrators. And they said the registration should be available soon. The consortium's website has many resources that are free and that anyone can look at. And I believe this is important to the social and emotional well-being of all the students. And with what's going on in the last few months, I think it's even more important. And I'm hoping that you can spread the word and maybe more teachers and administrators can take some time out of their busy summer schedule to view some of the workshops they're going to have. They are free. My school is very involved in the Amistad curriculum. I'm at East Avenue in Pleasantville. And we've also incorporated the Holocaust, and this year we're going to really work on Hispanic heritage. So important for every student to feel that they are valued and to teach everyone to learn about everyone's different cultures and backgrounds so that we can all get along better. I want to also thank the board for the job you do. I know it's not easy. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alabarda. That thank you for excellent comments and also very good suggestion with regard to that Amistad curriculum, and I'm gonna certainly recommend that that we explore that, and I want to see if Dr. Ruccio has any comments at this point on that or...
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mrs. Alabarda, for that information. If you could forward the details on those workshops to my email, I'd appreciate that. But regarding the Amistad curriculum, yes, we are on top of that. That's implemented in our high school history department at this time and in our curriculum. But with everything we do, we always look to learn more and be better at what we do. So thank you so much for those comments and suggestions.
Very good. We'll go to our next question.
Yep. Name and address, please.
Sonia Cruz, two oh seven Egan Avenue.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Okay, so just two quick comments. I'm a little surprised that you have a policy about the Citizens Advisory Committee, and it's already a policy and that we need to take a second look at that. So I would like some clarification on why we need to look at a second look at a policy that's there, and we've been asking for several years to implement the policy. So that I know I'm not gonna get a response, but if you want to reach out to me, I would love to kind of hear, you know, why we're kind of looking at it versus just implementing the policy. The second one is that, as much as I enjoy hearing over the phone and looking at you guys and, I mean, listening, I just want to know what the timeline is for us to get back into meetings that are gonna be held at Alder Avenue so we can be back in that kind of forum. So I know you're probably waiting for guidance, but I'm hoping that you guys are starting to implement what that plan's gonna look like because, you know, I think it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Mrs. Cruz. I'm gonna first, let me go, let me go in reversal. I would just go in reverse order. And I think you're asking about our board meetings, when we're gonna return from virtual to our in-person meetings. We did have a conversation. It's not a privileged topic or executive, you know, a confidential topic. And basically, there are gonna be two, the two factors that we're gonna look at. And, you know, the first is gonna be when Dr. Ruccio is able to tell us that, you know, the schools are allowed to be open, which would be after July two, and that the schools are going to be up to the safety standards and the social distancing and all of the things that need to be in place for us to meet safely. So that would be the first component. And then, secondly, we would, once we are at a point when we can go back to the schools in a safe manner, then it will be up to the board to decide itself by majority rule. And we will make that decision, you know, as a board as to when we're ready to move forward with that. And so I think that Mrs. Gilbert Floyd would like to address the Citizens Advisory question.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, so the Citizen Advisory question, when I stated the fact that I would wanted to look at the policy review, we do have that policy in place already. However, I just want to make sure that we are a district that, you know, not just has a, I don't want to have a policy that is just on paper. I want to have a policy that is active and alive and involving members of the community. So that was my, when I said, look at it for discussion. I've also looked at it for discussion on previous meetings, committee meetings, and at that time, we, I guess, we didn't have the opportunity to do so. But it is something that myself and some of the other committee members are for, and it is, it's a policy that's already in place. And I would like to get it from just, you know, from paper to action, even though we do have some portions of the policy that we use, like when we do strategic planning and invite the community in to give their opinion. But the Citizen Advisory Committee policy, if you look at it closely, it talks about the committee member serving as a liaison. So that's the clarification, is that it's not something that we're trying to implement. We have a policy. We're just reviewing it, looking at it, and making sure that it's something that's up to date and that it's functional in this year, twenty, in the twenty-twenty type of year, not, I think it last policy was looked at, I think it was, the last, I think it was two thousand two. If I'm not correct, Mr. Castellano was our historian for some of the information in committees, but I believe it was like two thousand two, maybe two thousand five. So just want to make sure we're up to date and that it's active and running.
Yes, and that's correct. And what, you know, we've discussed at the committee level is we've utilized strategic planning forums as opposed to the Citizens Advisory Committee structure when we've looked for input from our community. And we've also, at times, have convened committees just for the budget. So we've, we've just used other mechanisms, but this mechanism remains at our disposal for use. So, you know, it's incumbent on us to identify a topic or a subject area that we wish to be advised on separate and apart from strategic planning, and then to use this mechanism. Now, Dr. Ruccio, right now, is in the process of putting two groups together. One is on equity, and the other is on back to school. We could certainly use a Citizens Advisory Committee format or mechanism to put a group together, or, you know, we could use more of a town hall approach or a strategic planning approach. So it's just a matter of, you know, which mechanism we want to use, but I think we're all looking ahead in the same direction.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. I have another caller. Name and address, please.
Hi, Justin Riggs, two oh nine Garden Street Road, a former Board of Education member. I'm just calling in this evening, number one, thank you, everyone, for your service to the community. It's greatly appreciated. Dr. Ruccio, Miss Niaid, thank you for your leadership during these times. It's certainly not easy. Several people have asked me, and I don't know if this is something I can answer tonight or something that the board can consider. Several seniors were obviously awarded National Honor Society and Seal of Fine Literacy certifications. It's my understanding they did not receive their cords and are not receiving medals at this time. I just was seeing if it's possible for administration, high school administration, whoever, to maybe possibly consider giving this out to them at the in-person ceremony or at a later time. Just that was my comment. That's all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Riggs, and I'll
I think you turned it over to me. You were breaking up a little bit, Pete, but sure, I'd be glad to look into this and contact the high school, Mr. Riggs, and find out. You said it was cords and the shawls. It might have something to do with the backup of Jostens. I'm not sure, but I will look into that. And yes, if there is a possibility, we'll see if they can be handed out or at least on the students for the live graduation. I'm on it.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, absolutely. You know, we're really trying to do the very best we can for the seniors. I mean, we all are. So, absolutely. So, next question, please.
I do have another caller. Name and address, please. You're live streaming.
Hi, yes, this is Jessica Salerno, two ten Talawa Drive at Carver Township.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Hi, yes, good evening. First and foremost, I want to thank the Board of Education, the administrators, the staff, the teachers that have made such a significant difference for all the students throughout this full year and in light of the very challenging situation that has faced us with this pandemic. I am a nurse and working in our, one of our local hospitals, and have been on the front line for the past three months and acutely aware of the risks and what has been transpiring in our community. I did also have a senior who did graduate with a virtual graduation. That was wonderful work that everybody did, and we did enjoy that. I did have a question regarding the rationale behind the decisions for the students to have, I do appreciate that they voted to have just for them to participate as a group, and I think that is wonderful. By adding that second layer now for them to decide and one or the other makes it much more difficult for a student because then they're subject to not being able to be with their friends now, faced with the decision that they have to do one or the other. And then the second layer of that would be RNOT numbers, just less than one, actually, point eight, one is what the RNOT number was the first day in Governor Murphy's press conference, and the number's continually going down. Why the opportunity not to have the students, but also the public participation limited, wearing masks has not been something that we have been able to discuss with the governor's office or a decision by BOE or administration, especially in light of casinos opening at twenty-five percent capacity of that weekend tour, which is indoors.
Thank you.
Is, are, is that it for us, Mrs. Salerno?
Yes, that was the end. The background started playing from the screen.
Well, first, I want to thank you so much, Mrs. Salerno, for your call and for your service to our community as a nurse. And you have also, I mean, some very excellent questions. You know, our graduation plans have been changing almost daily based on the guidance that we're getting and trying to do the very best we can for our seniors, for their families, taking into account what our students want. We've polled them several times. Beyond that, it's something that, you know, we've left to the high school. It's not a decision that's at the board level. We're here to support. But I will, I am gonna see if Dr. Ruccio would like to speak on this, or would we like to consult with the high school? You know, and contact Mrs. Salerno, you know, after the meeting. I'll toss to you and see how you'd like to proceed.
I agree. For more specific details, I would recommend contacting the high school principal. Regarding the two choices, I believe it's meeting the needs of the community, meeting the needs of the students, and now meeting the needs and requests of the parents. So I think it was just an effort to say, okay, you know, if the parents can't be there and they really want to do this, here's an opportunity. This is a plan that we came up with to include parents. Again, because we're so large, it's so hard to be able to do both at the same time. So yes, I recommend for more specific details to contact the high school principal. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you again, and we'll look for our next question.
We do have another public comment. Name and address, please.
Carrie Davis, twenty-eight Marshall Drive.
Go ahead with your public comment.
My public comment is one about the upcoming twenty twenty graduation. Reaching out to you as a parent of four children who have gone through this district. My oldest is a senior, and obviously, graduation this year is disappointing for everyone. The staff who are looking forward to seeing their students graduate, students coming together, the parents being able to participate and see their children. My frustration has been in the way that this is handled. I believe it's been handled one of the worst that I've seen in this district. The way of communication, barely getting a letter or any notice the first announcement, and then this recent letter was rude and condescending and honestly lacked a lot of compassion. Obviously, I'm supporting my child, whatever he will do. And my frustration is that there is a choice. You can only participate in either with your class, and then you can't have your parents, or you forego your class and only have your parents. I think it leaves a lot of frustration as to how these kids from kindergarten through twelfth grade have never even had a graduation at all. So it's not the adversity that we are trying to overcome. It's how we're handling it and the lack of compassion for the administration as parents and what we are experiencing and have experienced this whole quarantine and just going into not handling it by communicating. this whole quarantine, and just going into not handling it by communicating better. I understand we're trying to do what's best for the kids, of what anyone would all want, and there is no way that anyone's going to truly be happy. But if there's a line of communication that can at least come from this, I feel as a parent, I was very put off by not being formally told, and then the latest letter, which was saying that apparently some parents are upset. Of course we're upset, but just the whole of the choice of one or the other. I just need to try and understand why you can't have a whole graduation with everybody, with the speeches and the whole class, obviously no parents, but then if you want to have parents, you can come back and your parents can witness this as well. My question is just why one or the other? Why not have one and then come back and do later? I know this can't be the only school district to decide they're doing this like this. So that's my biggest question.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, and I, I think that's obviously another, you know, uh, aspect. We, we all want the best for the students, the communities, and the family. The families. Um, and we've been doing the very best we can. This is a fluid situation. It's been changing daily, uh, and you know, I'm repeating what I said last time. Uh, you know, and we've, as a district, we've really tried our best to get through this. Uh, I'm gonna see, you know, uh, Dr. Gruccio, if there's anything else that, that you'd like to add. I don't know what more I can say than uh, we've really, really tried our best um, to, to get through this and do the best we can for students, for families and the community.
After great, it hasn't been easy. I, I believe a lot of compassion um, has been put into this. Um, you know, I, I wake up every morning. I, I shed a tear Thursday night. I was, I sat here and cried when I watched the virtual graduation because I knew we could have been on the field. Um, it's one of my favorite nights. It's, it's so enlightening. Um, it's just, it's an amazing feeling to walk down that track and see those kids walk, walk onto the field. Um, and they didn't get to experience that, we didn't get to experience that. But um, I know that the high school administration is listening to the students. They have communicated. They've put two surveys out. The English teachers are the only teachers that um, the students see, all seniors see, because all seniors have um, English classes, and they've been communicating with the students through those teachers, um, which was a really personalized uh, process. Um, there were letters, there were um, um, emails and texts to my knowledge. Um, but again, for more specific um, information, I do recommend that um, that you call the high school principal um, and have that discussion, because um, I just find when people talk and they talk things out, we understand um, better about what sides, you know, both sides are feeling. But again, the two um, ceremonies, if you will, one was really to give parents a chance to be alongside with their student in that gown, walking out on the track and we, having their name called. So um, I know we received a lot of feedback um, about that, that parents wanted to experience that as well. So, you know, I, I, I do believe everybody has great points and their best interests um, right now are the students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. We do have another caller. Name and address, please.
Kevin Rockman, 189 Alder Avenue.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Um, hi, I would just like to thank all of you for all of your hard work. It sure can't be easy uh, up against something that nobody's ever had to deal with. And uh, so thank you for all you're doing for the students and the teachers and for just the community at large. Um, I have a couple of things. I just want to uh, uh, say that uh, I have been trying to use the link um, to, for the committee for the back to school, and I have been very, very unsuccessful. So, uh, I don't know, I've, I've been communicating with um, um, Dr. Gruccio's administrative assistant. Uh, we're not getting anywhere with it, and I don't want to miss the opportunity to uh, apply for that committee. Um, the other thing is, is that I did send an email that was to go to Dr. Gruccio and Chandra about a suggestion about face masks for using face masks or not, now pardon me, physically shields instead of the regular masks for younger students if we're required to use masks when their kids return back to school. I saw a young boy, seven years old at school. He had a shield on, and I stopped him and talked to his mom and him, and at great length. And he really told me he likes the shield. It's comfortable, it's easy to use, and he liked it much better and would prefer to use that if he had a choice when he goes back to school. And, and so I didn't know if you guys got that email or not, so I wanted to just bring it up and mention it to you. I don't want to miss if, if it's something that we could do. I don't want to miss the uh, order deadlines or anything like that. And so that's really pretty much all I have to say. So, again, just thank you. Appreciate it. Everything you do and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rockman. We will certainly make sure that that connection is made and that we get you on the committee and that we consider all the valuable input that, that you would have towards uh, reopening school um, uh, with that group. Um, Kim, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, um, I, I, I feel bad that you had difficulty getting on. I suggest you check again. We did go in this morning and see if um, everything was working. If not, you know, email me. That's not a problem. You know, I'll get you on the list, and my administrative assistant did uh, share your um, concerns and frustrations with me. And also Chandra and I did look at the um, the email that you sent, and again, that would be um, helpful information for the committee as we move forward and explore masks versus um, shields and/or both, or whatever STEM project someone comes up with uh, over the summer and uh, you know, we could use uh, for September. So, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I do have another caller. Hold on. Yep, I'm sorry, did you want to say something else, Mr. Casalano?
Oh, no, no, I'm ready for our next question.
Name and address, please.
Mr. Chris O'Connor, high school principal.
Go ahead with your comment.
Hi, good evening, Board of Education, Mr. Casalano, and everyone. Uh, I just was listening, of course, as I do every week, to some of the comments coming in. And I thought maybe if it's okay with you, that I can um, explain what we've been doing at the high school. Maybe it'll help some of the parents understand. Uh, as for communication, I, I feel like we have been very upfront and tried to do the best we could. Uh, we're in a time, just like they are, something that we're not used to. Uh, you know, our, our plans for graduation have changed numerous times. We, we were going to do it with four, five ceremonies, a hundred kids, two parents. Um, I met with uh, student body at least twice, asking the students what they want. As you know, we're baked with student voice in our district. So I, I, I just wanted to let parents know, these were not these were not um, you know, things that we just thought we'll just do and not have any input. Uh, you know, I feel for the parents too. I've been through twenty-nine graduations at this high school, and it, it, it hurts me that I'm not out there doing what we always do. Uh, students wanted to do it together. That was sixty-seven percent of the students in the first uh, survey said they wanted to be together. And so we went with the majority. Then I heard that people were upset, so we had the students last week, and we had a short amount of time to get them because they were getting ready to finish school. And we then um, put another survey out, and as Dr. Gruccio said, everything has gone out through the English classes. So if the children were attending English, there was a lot of information going to them. Uh, and hopes that they would share them with their parents as well, if the parents were asking how, you know, if you heard anything more on graduation. Uh, and so I just wanted you to know that, you know, we didn't take this lightly. Uh, the second survey that went out last week, the students once again, sixty-seven percent of the students uh, said that they wanted to be together. So that's what we were gonna go with. Then um, as people were upset, I saw it on Facebook, I heard it in the community, I thought, well, students voiced themselves twice to me that this is what they wanted. So if the parents are upset, then let them talk to the children, and maybe they'll want to do it with their parents. So that's why we put out two cer- ceremonies for graduation day. And again, I just wanted you to be aware of that. Um, the last thing I wanted to say, I think, Mr. Uh, there was, there was a caller that came in about the cords. Uh, we had one graduation um, giving out of the uh, casting gown, and we ran out of the cords. We had a second pickup, and all the cords were there. Students came in and got their cords. Uh, and we will have cords tomorrow as the yearbook pickup as well for anybody that may have not gotten there. Uh, in every communication I went, that went out, I did say uh, that um, they could uh, settle their obligations, that they could pick up anything that they needed, and if the times were not appropriate for the parents or students, that just call us, and we'll make, we'll make the time to be there that you can get what you need. So that's all I have to say, and I thank you for your support. I appreciate everything that everyone is going through. The students, they know how I feel. Uh, parents, if we didn't do it exactly like we wanted, I apologize, but we are doing our best that we can. Our staff has been working constantly for three months, trying to plan. So, thank you for listening, and uh, I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you.
May I make a comment, Mr. Casalano?
Uh, sure.
Um, my comment to this is, I'm not sure if the parents and students realize that, and maybe I'm incorrect, but it, we are not allowed to have gatherings over five hundred, is that correct, Kim? And that's the reason for, um, I mean, we have over five hundred kids in the senior class. So in order for them to have all the students together, we can't have the overage in parents, whereas the other one, if you want to walk with your parents, then, you know, that's the option with the second uh, meeting. And I'm not sure if the public understands that, or maybe I'm not understanding it, but as far as a full scale with, you know, three thousand people there, it, we're just not allowed to do it.
Well, and uh, just, just backing up, I, I want to thank uh, Ms. Connor very much for all that you do, the great work that you do for our district and at our high school, and uh, I, I really want to thank you for calling in tonight uh, and, and adding uh, some clarification and, and reassurance to everyone, and you know, we certainly share with you uh, the love for our students and, you know, wishing nothing but the best for them, and really trying our best to get through this graduation time uh, under the circumstances that we have. Everyone wants to have a regular graduation like we've always had. It's, it's one of the best things that we do here in the district among, you know, some other things that we talked about earlier uh, tonight. So, again, you know, we're, we've really, really tried our best, and we're, we're, we're still, you know, uh, it's still ongoing. And so I'll, you know, see, uh, Dr. Gruccio, if, if there's anything you'd like to, to add on, but you know, thank you, Ms. Connor, and you know, we're doing, we're doing our best for these kids. We really are.
No, Marita Pete perfectly said. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
There haven't been any phone calls for a few minutes. Oh, of course, please hold. Okay, name and address again, please.
Dr. Natagi Chestnut, 307 Iron Lane, in Harbor Township.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Okay, I just want to um, acknowledge not only the high school staff, but administrative team uh, for doing a great job holding out for the, for the school year, as well as all the preparations they made um, to honor our senior um, class. It is very easy for um, you know, the public to sit back and um, you know, criticize what should have been done. Um, you know, that, and there were so many unknowns this year, so, you know, surrounding graduation and COVID nineteen. So I think, you know, as, as a parent of a high school student, they, they should be commended for um, a job well done, considering um, the variant unknown. And like I said, it is very easy for them to sit back and complain, and no matter what decision is made, you're never going to be able to see everyone. So um, you know, just stand in mind, administrative team, Connor, you're doing an excellent job, and hats off to you. That concludes my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chestnut. We appreciate your, your comment very much. Waiting for any others.
We will wait another minute, yes. Okay, it's been a complete minute without any public comment. If you want to move on, Mr. Casalano.
Uh, yes, I'm gonna go ahead to board members, and I know Mr. Price has been patiently waiting because he had a question.
Sorry.
Outset. Uh, we have a public. Well, Mr. Price is gonna have to be patient for one more minute or so.
Okay, name and address again, please.
It's Patrick Ireland, 5 Gardinia Drive, E H State.
And your public comment.
I apologize if this has been uh, asked previously, but I was just wondering if three-year-olds this year will be able to enroll into creed day. And that is it. Everybody, have a great evening. Have a good one. Bye.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ireland, for that uh, that question, and that, I believe, is also Mr. Price's uh, question as well. So uh, we will go ahead and uh, allow our administration to uh, address those simultaneously.
Okay, yes, perfect opportune time uh, for Mr. Santilli to give an update on uh, where we were, are with preschool in terms of four-year-olds, how we're moving to three, and the full-day kindergarten as well.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Um, so I'll start with preschool. Um, right now, the initial um, the initial campaign, I would say, uh, was focused on four-year-olds, um, obviously, because we did not want um, our focus was on four-year-olds, since we didn't want a three-year-old, for instance, to be able to take that spot. Uh, we have so many spots for our uh, program, and ultimately, right now, looking at our numbers, um, I anticipate that we probably will be um, opening up that shortly. Um, and possibly even uh, as we move into next week. Um, so stay tuned for that. Um, on the flip side, we'll talk full-day kindergarten. I know Mr. Price had a question in regards to where we were with our numbers. Um, so I can tell you right now, um, and I'm gonna walk through it, um, we are doing an online uh, registration process right now. That online registration process um, is, is really the first time we've used this. And ultimately, there's approximately a hundred and forty um, students that are fully registered. There are approximately seventy-seven um, students that I would say are what I call on hold. They are missing like one particular document, for instance, let's say like immunizations. Um, then there's approximately sixty-two new um, or resubmitted apps. So if you take the hundred and forty total um, that are fully registered and completed, coupled with the other numbers I gave you, that's another hundred and thirty-nine that, let's say, are in the process. If they, if all of those folks complete their online applications as stated.
Very good, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Santilli, for that, uh, follow-up. Um, so before we go to board members, we'll see, uh, Chandra, if we have any other public, uh, questions or comments, and then we'll go to board members. Mr. Price will, will be our leadoff.
We have not had any more calls come in.
Okay, so we will close the, the public portion, we will move to board members. Mr. Price has been waiting patiently since our, uh, superintendent's report, so, uh, he will be our leadoff.
Pardon my, my delay there, I had to find the right button. Um, thank you, thank you for the, uh, updates. Uh, those were the questions that I, um, had received, uh, comments about. So I, I just wanted to get some clarification on them, so that does answer my questions with the preschool, uh, for three-year-olds. Uh, will there be a, a class this year? And that answers the question, that, that's something that, uh, yes, and, uh, you're gonna look into, um, considering that next week. And the other, uh, question was the full-day kindergarten, what are our total counts up until now? And you say we're up, with all, all things figured, we're up around 279 or 280. And the, um, the date, the cutoff date for the registration was June 15th, is that correct?
So the cutoff date, um, the cutoff date was June 15th, but that was more of, um, of what I would refer to as our marketing plan. Um, you know, obviously, as you know, we continue to take registrations as they will come in, um, and we're gonna continue to push, um, that full-day kindergarten, um, and, and also preschool, um, registration marketing campaigns, whether on social media or through, um, our website.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Santilli, because I know there's a lot of interest out there and a lot of people are excited about it. So I'm glad that we were able to get that out here tonight and, uh, make some clarification. So that's all my comments.
Thank you, and also, and, and also to note, if anybody does have any issues with the, um, online registration, uh, they could feel free to reach out to Central Registration at any time. I know that, um, they've been working, uh, very hard in that office to make sure that they meet the needs of the community. Um, this process is new, the online registration process, so, uh, if anybody's having trouble finalizing some of those applications, such as the, um, you know, how they have to upload their immunizations or any other records for that matter, just feel free to reach out to Central Registration, we'll be glad to help. But thank you.
Okay, are there any more, uh, board members, comments or questions, please? Okay, uh, hearing and, and seeing none, uh, the, the only thing left, uh, before we adjourn is to...
Pete, I'm sorry, Pete, excuse me. Tamika's trying to get your attention, she has a comment.
Sorry. Well, I'm sorry, yes, so I just wanted to say, um, I wanted to thank, um, the administration for, um, the message that was posted on the district website in reference to, um, Acrever Township School District taking a stance on, um, injustice and, um, biases, the, the letter that you put out to the, um, the community, Dr. Gruccio. Um, I don't know if everyone saw the, saw the, uh, message. Um, I think that was very important and very, um, timely and appropriate, you know, for, um, the community to know where the district stands on, um, those type of issues that affect all of us as a community. So I wanted to thank you for that, for addressing it and not being silent. Um, also, just some follow-up on where do we kind of go from here as a district? So, um, Ms. Alabarta, she called in and mentioned the Amistad, um, curriculum, and it was mentioned that it was, you know, pretty prominent at the high school. I just didn't know if it was how it can be weaved in, um, to the lower grades and just to look at, just looking at our curriculum and how we present, um, our history, um, programs. Um, also, we've definitely talked in the past, the reference to recruitment plans in reference to diversifying our staff. Also, in reference to the achievement gap and, um, our performance of groups of children, subgroups of children, um, also cultural competency training for teachers, um, staff, um, and administration, and making sure that, um, the vision that you have for all students, for, you know, for all students, every student, you know, every day in Acrever Township, um, that that's translated from your vision, um, and your, uh, values you have set for the district, district goals, but making sure that that's transferred into the classroom on a day-to-day basis, and also in the environment when people walk into the building. Um, and the other thing is also, also, we had, um, as a school board, we had the opportunity to go to the Atlantic County School Board meeting, and at that meeting, we had Dr., uh, I believe, I think she's Dr. now, Dr. Christine Ruth, who did a very, an amazing presentation. Um, and she talked a lot in reference to all the concerns that are kind of taking place in our, in our world today, represents biases, prejudices, and different injustices that take place, um, particularly these students of, students of, um, color. So I think that she would be a great, uh, starting point if we wanted to talk with someone to reach out and to serve as a liaison, maybe with the district somehow. Um, if the New Jersey School Board Association had her come speak to us, I think that she would be, um, a great asset as well. I'm not sure what's, what's...
I can, I can give you some information. Tamika, I can tell you a little bit, she's a former student, I believe I was her principal when she was a youngster in the district. And, uh, I do have her contact information that I could share. And those of us who were, uh, privileged to be there that night, for excellent presentation, I agree with you. And I, I'm sure, knowing, uh, Christine, she would be anxious and most willing to help us in any way possible. So if anybody needs, um, I can make sure I'll find her card that she gave me, I believe I still have it, and we'll make a contact, I think I'm also, on Facebook I can find her, because I know she, after, she talked to me afterward.
Dr. Alabarta, careful.
So, uh, I know she was, and reminded me that I was her principal.
Yes, to get an opportunity to speak to her, I think she would be a great asset. And just to make sure that, um, I just want to say thank you personally, um, Acrever Township, um, administration, for, for, um, speaking up and saying something and taking a stance on, and letting the community know where the, um, the district and the school district stands, um, on issues of injustice. So I appreciate that.
While I have the mic, Pete, if you don't mind, uh, there, there will be another county, Atlantic County School Boards Association meeting, virtual meeting, on August 10th. And it's a Monday night, I believe it will be a joint meeting, I'm not sure, probably with Cape May County, arrangements are being made at this time. No program has been established as of yet, but they do plan to meet again, and your county officers plan to meet during the summer to arrange programs for the new year. But, School Boards has decided that from now until November 1st, all meetings will remain virtual. They're not going with any in-person meetings until at least November 1st. That was an interesting decision that they came up with this past week. So I just thought you'd like to hear that one too. Thank you, guys.
Um, thank you, I also have a comment, if that's okay.
Sure.
I wanted to, um, add and agree with, uh, what Tamika and Lou said about, uh, Dr. Christine Ruth. She gave us an amazing presentation and, um, her research was done for her doctorate mostly in Atlantic County. So the data she provided us, she had her pulse on our community, our surrounding communities. So it is not based on what's happening in California, or Washington State, or Oklahoma, it is on what is happening in Atlantic County, the impact of, um, not teaching things, not seeing things through the lens of different kinds of people. So I think that that is an asset that I hope that our HR department will utilize, that our administration will utilize, and that us as a Board of Education will continue to utilize. Um, it was wonderful. And my further comments are regarding the student performance report. Um, the numbers are discouraging. Obviously, the work that our teachers are doing in the classroom cannot be summed up from one day of testing. However, I think that some key takeaways we need to focus on is our absenteeism numbers are increasing. With a district that buses their students to school, I'm not, we need to find out why absenteeism is increasing. They have rights to school, so, um, that is concerning. And I think we did add the truancy officer piece, so we have more resources. So I hope that we can dig in and get our kids to school. Um, NJSLA is different than Park, yes, in name, really, but they're assessing the same skills. It's just called something different. So it may not be apples to apples, but it's pretty close comparison to the previous two years, and our numbers are, have decreased. So it's alarming, because we have, uh, put so much money into the reading, writing workshop model, we just, um, did the Linkit, uh, um, we extended the contract for Linkit, which I believe is data storage, but it also is supposed to find where gaps are in our students' learning and, and fill in those gaps. So I'm not so sure, you know, if that's happening. Um, and I think that we should really look into our basic skills teachers that we have as part-time, getting them to be full-time, because we have a need, and we have some hires on this agenda that we're gonna be voting on next week, that I feel like, um, aren't meeting the needs that we see in the test scores that we receive as a board. And so I would like to see our resources used for basic skills instruction, to get these kids where they need to be, not necessarily for a test, but that they're successful in every grade while they're at Acrever Township. Thank you.
Hello.
Thank you very much, who else has a comment? Mr. Ellis?
I'd just like to really thank, um, Ms. Cruz and her crew and the teachers and all that. I mentioned a month or so ago about doing something for the kids, the yearbooks, that was a great thing. But also, I want to mention the fact about, uh, kids making the decision for their graduation, which is good for them to make a decision. Well, I had two bouncing baby boys, and the happiest moment in my life, one of the happiest moment in my life with them was to attend a graduation. Nothing could take the place of a parent who raised that child when they were sick, they had to stay home from work, they had to get up in the morning, fix some breakfast, they had to prepare them lunch and get home, fix some dinner, and help them with homework, probably up until about the fifth grade, because homework's so difficult now, that's all you can do unless you're a teacher. If some kind of way, we could find a way to include the parents, that's the biggest gift a kid could give to their parents. If I'm a kid, I'm gonna select my peers over my parents, but if you look out on the streets, majority of the kids are not paying much attention to the distance. They all playing basketball, they all riding bikes, they all having fun. They're gonna get together. Please do not deprive parents of that opportunity to see their kids. I'm quite sure, we as board members, if we should have a son or daughter, I guarantee you, this wouldn't be a, a topic of discussion. This would never happen, because I wouldn't allow, you know, I, I, you know, you really all have a choice, but you gotta find a way to include the parents in the most, one of the most important things that they did for their son or daughter. You know, and, and it's sad to think that a parent's gonna have to sit on the sideline. Winslow Township, at a graduation, was unbelievable. Parents, groups of five, first of all, you live in the same house, so you're gonna be together anyway. So we gotta find a way to put that household, let them march, in one in the gym and out the other gym like they did in Winslow. There's ways to do it. Please do not deprive these parents of their gift. You know, that's why I had to say, and, uh, you know, please look into it, in some kind of way, do not deprive the parents.
Pete, may I make an additional comment to support Ray on that? Um, Viningland High School, did the drive-through idea, the kids decorated the cars, they drove through, there's, they're around the high school, they stopped at a stage, they awarded each kid their diploma, the parents, of course, were in the car with the family, it was appropriate. They have a pretty large school district with a pretty, uh, larger, uh, high school, uh, graduating class. So I, I know, if you look at all the items around the country, there are ways that we could probably have included the parents in a more direct way, and I, I, I think Ray made an excellent comment, thank you.
I absolutely 100% agree. I think utilizing the students' impact is so important, and I, I, um, I give our administration so much credit for wanting to include that piece, but I think that for parents to be excluded from the piece was, um, just a, uh, a mistake. And obviously, you've done so many wonderful things, and, I mean, I think you've been a leader in the state with how, uh, you've handled the quarantine and, and everything with our schools. But if we could come up with some kind of hybrid, you know, even if we break our students up, 200 students and they can bring two parents, so that's 400 people at a time, or 225 and two, right? We have 600 kids, so, right? So maybe we could do a morning session, an afternoon session, and a night session, or, you know, the drive-through like Lou's saying. There are so many large universities in our country that have way more kids than this, and they've held some kind of graduation. We need to look to that and figure out what's best for our students and our families, because we talk about stakeholders. Well, our parents, our community members, and they're our stakeholders too, and they need to share in the special moment with their children, because for some of them, they might not have attained this special moment themselves, or they may have immigrated here from somewhere else, and it's a really big deal. And so we need to do whatever we can, even if we don't do it the first week in July, and we have to wait a couple more weeks, because we may need more time to plan. But we need to get our students with the people they love there to support them, because that parent's support is how kids get to graduation.
Um, I just wanted to add that usually I don't agree with Ray, or much, but, um, I will not lie that, you know, when I did kind of hear, you know, I, I did reach out and I said, um, to another board member, I said, there, at first it kind of came out as if there were no parents, um, going to the graduation, but now that you said you get the, they have to get the choice between being with their family or with their parent, and Mr. Ellis did mention Winslow Township School District, um, and that their graduation at the high school, they do have, they do have significantly a lower amount of students than we do have in Acrever Township. Uh, but they, they did do it in a manner where they were allowed to bring a certain amount of parents, and they came in, did their picture, and then they, you know, you know, had to leave. Um, and each, each student had a time that they had to report. Um, so I, I'm just gonna say that, you know, I, I do have the utmost respect for, um, being an administrator, it's not an easy job, and you will not make everyone happy. Um, but if there's a possible way that we could visit and look into maybe just kind of rethinking it and seeing if there's any way that we can have maybe at least have one, two, like, you know, sometimes at graduation, you have two people that you can bring to each, you know, to the graduation, if it has to be separate, stay within the guidelines that the governor has, has put out, which tomorrow could be different for graduation too. So I do understand that this is really a plan-as-you-go, and it's, you know, I guess, I've said to the parents, just know that, I think there's every, I think every person on here, as a board member, is a parent, and we feel the pain of, you know, thinking that you cannot attend your child's graduation, one of their biggest special moments. Some people say, "Oh, well, you have college." Some people are going on to college, some people aren't. You know, a graduation is a graduation, I don't care if it's kindergarten, preschool, um, sixth grade or middle school, you all know that I want to have a middle school graduation, I'm not even, sorry, Dr. Gruccio, for putting that out there, but I'm for an eighth-grade graduation. but I'm for an eighth grade graduation as well, but that's another story. But that's it.
Do we have other board members, any that haven't spoken yet? Any other board members?
Oh, I just wanted to thank Mr. Patrick Ireland, just wanted to tell him thank you, he reached out to me in reference to wanting to help me with a community event, so thank you, Mr. Ireland.
Any other board members, comments, comments, questions? I think we're all in agreement on graduation, we want to see the best, we want to see the best for our students, our community, and our parents, and I think we're all in agreement. So, I don't hear anything, see anything from board members, any of our administrators, final comments?
Mr. Castellano, I just have one update, Board Secretary, they did put out the application for new board members. The deadline is the end of July, I will be forwarding it to the incumbents completed, where they just have to get the signatures. But if anybody else is interested, we'll be putting it on our website under Board of Education, and if you contact me as Board Secretary, I can make sure you guys can get it.
Very good, thank you, any, any administration, anything else? Doc?
No, you know, I, I, I hear the feedback, and I think you've heard, it's, it's not an easy process because of the numbers that have changed, a lot of the drive-by ceremonies were done now, and that's prior to the 500 allotment. Some of them didn't follow guidelines, because students really aren't supposed to get out of their cars, and the Executive County Superintendent made that clear to Atlantic County Schools. So again, the holdout was for the increase of number, and it was 500, you know, hoping that there'd be 1,000, 2,000, because with 600 kids, two parents, you know, you're talking 1,800 people right there. So, that was where a choice had to be made. And, you know, we deal with teenagers, not so much me anymore, I did my high school stint, and, but I remember how they are, and I did hear feedback from the high school and from, that they heard feedback from the students and said, well, why ask us? Because if you're going to listen to what I say, if you're not going to listen to what we say and do something else, and don't ask us anymore. So you kind of get trapped in, in that thing where you want to meet the student needs, especially when they're so vocal and they're reaching out. So, yeah, it's a difficult situation, I'll talk to administration tomorrow, and see, you know, I'm sure they're tuned into the meeting, and see where they are. But I hear you loud and clear, and again, we always work to meet the needs, and we'll see how this all, all turns out, all right? So thank you.
Okay, thank you very, very much, Dr. Gruchio. Another board comment?
I just, I just wanted to clarify, when I wanted to say that I wanted to thank, I know Mr. Ireland called in early, I just wanted to thank him. He, he, he reached out to me in reference to supporting the, the peaceful protest rally that took place in A. Carver Township, and, you know, asked me if there's anything that I needed, that he would, to please reach out to him. And I just wanted to personally thank him, and it speaks to his, you know, standing, you know, in a gap for, you know, injustices, and standing with the community in A. Carver Township, so thank you so much to him.
Okay, I think we're at the point now, I'm going to see, board members, I, I would like to see if there is, if there is a need to return to executive. It'd be my recommendation that we postpone any business, I know we had a few items, but that we put them to next week. We know we're going to be back in executive after next week's meeting for, for some other personnel business. So I'm going to suggest that we adjourn for tonight, but I'll, I'll take suggestions.
Mr. Castellano, I agree that adjourning is a good idea, I know for myself, I have to go pick my daughter up, but could we possibly meet at 5:30 next week? So we have a little bit more time, because we have been running short on completing what we need to complete in executive. I don't know what everyone else wants to do, but just a suggestion.
Well, I was just going to say that, I, I mean, if everyone is in agreeance to not, you know, to put it off to next week, I mean, I want to go with the majority, but I do want to say that I definitely agree that we definitely, you know, have some things sometimes that run over, since we do, we do personnel as well. And I know I have some, some, some hot points that I definitely need to get some clarification on in reference to school board issues, and school board code of ethics for board members, I'd like to make sure that we talk about that in executive session, and a few other things that are pretty important, I think, that I would love to discuss tonight, but if the majority wants to call it a night, I'm okay with that as well. But those items will be on the table for executive for next time.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the delay, Pete, and I think the 5:30 idea is also an excellent idea for next week.
Well, and I don't-
I agree.
I, I think our issue's going to be, and I'm going to look to, well, so, I think that going to an earlier time is, I don't know if that's going to be lined up with our advertisement for when our meeting starts, so I think I'm going to look to-
It would have to be-
Go for that.
It would have to be re-advertised, Mr. Castellano, but there is enough time between now and next week to do that, if that's what you choose.
Okay.
Okay, or we just go back to executive after the meeting, and that-
Well-
Instead of going to the head.
Right, so there's, there are things that, you know, as we discussed, that we'd have to come back in for next week, anyway. You know, I think you'd be- broader topic, if, if we're going to start having longer executive sessions, that's something we're going to have to discuss, you know, as a board. I mean, our executive sessions are an hour, and there's a lot of business to do. So that's something we have to talk about.
Right, I just would like to comment one thing, if I have it. Since we've been doing it virtual, I noticed that there are, it does require more time. So, it's probably not a bad idea to consider maybe just starting a half hour early anyway, as long as we're still going on virtual, because we always seem to, it takes longer to get things done this way. So, I, I think that it is a good idea if we could start a half hour early.
Could we do a straw poll?
If members want to start at 5:30, it's very difficult for me with my, with my job, but if that's what board members want to do, I mean, 5:30 is very difficult. But, if that's, you know, let's do the, let's do a straw poll, if we want to meet at 5:30.
If you can put your hands up, and I can just call you out, that's fine. I see, Mrs. Sullivan, I'm sorry, Tamika, I can't hear.
I'm just saying, if we, if it's going to be difficult for, for Pete, I, I just feel like, going into, let's say we have, let's say we go into executive session after the public meeting, is that the worst thing in the world, or, I'm not sure? Like, I know it's late, nobody, listen, I, I get it, but I just, if we have that opportunity-
Well, that's what we're going to do next week, and we could do that tonight, if board members want to go in tonight, we certainly can. But, you know-
Next week, instead of changing the time to meet early, if it's going to be an inconvenience for the president to be there who has to run the meeting.
That's fine, that's fine, I'll do, I'll do whatever, whatever the majority needs to do, you know, we'll do.
Okay.
We, we do have to, we do have to work together in order to keep our meetings moving. You know, so I, I always strike that balance, I try to give everyone, you know, the maximum opportunity to speak, but I also try to get us through the items we need to get through, and that's a difficult balance.
Mr. Kelly, I'm hearing two different, I'm sorry, are we hearing two different things happening? One, if we're going back into executive, and two, if we're going to start early next week. But then Maria, we need to say something, so.
Mr. Castellano, I would like to suggest that we adjourn for tonight, we meet at our regular time tomorrow, or next week, and that we do go into executive at the end of the meeting next week, we'll all be prepared, we'll have made time. Actually, today we ran over a lot, because we were talking about all new issues. Now we're all familiar with what we're going to be talking about, we should be able to do it in our slotted time. But if not, we will all agree and make ourselves available next meeting to go back into executive. That's my question.
Okay, can I hear a straw, do I, let's have a straw vote on that, that we will meet, we will turn tonight, next week, we will go into executive after our public.
Okay, hands up, please, I have Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Byrd. Hands up if you, Mr. Delabarka, Mr. Price, and Mr. Castellano, I see your hand there too, so it's fine, okay.
And Miss Floyd.
And Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, with that then, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you all, thank you all, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming, board members, administration, public, and a special shout-out to our seniors, we're thinking of you. So, good night, good night, everyone.
Good night.